Turn this on. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McArdle.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall asked to be excused. And Councilmember Woodard should be appearing via teleconference.
All right.
Move to excuse Councilmember Wall?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He's been excused. And now we're just waiting for Councilmember Woodard. All right. We'll just continue on. Next on our agenda is the presentation and discussion of the 2023-2024 biennial budget ordinance.
Good evening, Councilmembers. For the record, Stephen Clifton, Assistant City Manager. So for tonight's presentation, this is simply a follow-up to presentations that were given on November 7th, 9th, 10th, and 17th. And in the interest of time, tonight, I'll focus primarily on what's different between what was presented those previous meetings and then what we bring before you this afternoon or this evening regarding new proposals. For those who haven't participated, I'll just briefly go through some of the schedule and where we've been. Right now, we are currently on the December 1st part of the presentation, and it is a review of the 2324 biennial budget and related ordinance. And then on December 5th, we will have a public hearing on and adoption of the 2023-24 proposed budget ordinance. And so for tonight, at the conclusion of our presentation, what we're looking for from the City Council is to let us know if the information provided this evening and then any proposed or recommended changes by the Council. If we can have those tonight, we can include those and modify the budget accordingly so that what's posted on Monday evening reflects where the Council would like to take the budget. At this point, it is the Council's budget, and I'll kind of distinguish between what we presented and what the Council has recommended since. And then on December 6th, that is a tentative date, and the Council will need to let us know if they're not going to be making the decision on December 5th, so we can post a notice accordingly. And then on the December 15th, those are regular meetings with a lot of presentations related to professional services agreements. So just going back in time a bit, on November 7th, what I presented to the City Council were a number of line items of proposed changes in the budget. And then we did identify whether or not those expenditures would occur in 2023, or 2024, or both, and then related funding sources. So for the first item, we had an amount of $30,000 for each year, and proposing that ARPA pay for that funding. And it would be used to help with work plan, events, meetings, and also to contract with a consultant who can help the DEIC put together a work plan, some structure, and then help facilitate the meetings. Also, funding for an IT strategic plan and structural evaluation consultant. That's a one-time expenditure in 2023. We also propose using ARPA funds for that. Also, the creation of a communications manager. And then the existing communication specialists would not be funded, and the difference between those is $39,000 and $40,000 rounded respectively for years '23 and '24. And that would be general fund, ongoing. And then for the police department, the police chief is recommending or requesting e-bikes, two, to be specific, racks, training, uniforms, maintenance. The upfront cost in 2023 is $30,000. And then 2024, $15,000 is a placeholder. He's not expecting to actually spend that much. It's really just in case they need to upgrade the equipment. So that's an estimation at this time. New community services officer. This is where the police department would combine two part-time cadet positions and create one community services officer. And you see a difference of $13,000 for each year, rounded up. And that would be for ARPA, general fund, and also, I'm sorry, ARPA for years '23, '24, and general fund, ongoing. Human resources, we're proposing $40,000 to conduct a salary survey in year 2023. For parks and recreation, we have childcare stabilization grant and workforce grant. This is a one-time expenditure of $123,000. This would be matching funds and used for recruiting and retention for existing childcare staffing and expenses. And this is something the Council discussed previously, and so we're now identifying this amount to be taken from ARPA. We also propose adding a special events coordinator position. We did discuss this at previous meetings. They would assist with communications, planning, coordinating, and implementing city and community events. The cost would be $84,708 and $87,249,000 for years '23 and '24 respectively. The proposal is to utilize ARPA funding for the first two years and then general fund, ongoing. Also, there's a dedicated scholarship fund, ages 0 through 17, for camps and classes, currently limited to $50 a quarter. And so this is to provide assistance to more families. And there's an amount of $10,000 for each year of the biennial budget, and we're proposing ARPA funds for those first two years. Also, $20,000 for years '23 and '24 for Independence Day celebration. This will come from the general fund. There's $35,000 for Toro, 72-inch rotary motor for mowing, piece of mowing equipment that's desperately needed. Also, a billy goat leaf collector, one-time expenditure of $30,000 for that. Both would come from Fund 011, which is essentially the general fund. Public Works is requesting $380,000 for a camera van with extension ability. That is a one-time expenditure. That would be Fund 410 and 511. Emergency response trailer, an amount for $7,000. That would be Fund 411. 30-inch asphalt zipper. And in the slides that I presented on November 7th, there were pictures of these two major pieces of equipment, that being the camera van and also the asphalt zipper. $180,000 for year 2023, so one-time expenditure. On the right-hand side, under the fund column, we have Fund 111, which is essentially the general fund. So this is how much would come out of that, and then 410, 411. We have the funding sources for those as well. And then Public Works shelf stock. What we're finding in the age of the pandemic slash endemic is that it's getting very difficult to keep our stocks, our shelves stocked. And so the intent is to purchase equipment that we use regularly and to purchase it at one time so that we have it readily available instead of having to wait months and months after placing an order. So that's the intent of this funding here. And we have amounts of $50,000 and $51,000 for years '23 and '24 respectively, and we have the associated funding sources in the right-hand column. Also, a diagnostic vehicle electronic scanner, one-time expenditure in 2024. That comes from Fund 511. And also, there's funding for a new maintenance worker, one position. And so we have the amounts listed in '23 and '24 of $89,962 and $96,312 respectively. That is general fund, 111, ongoing. And then also, there's a proposal for a mechanic overlap. The individual that's in the position now does intend to retire, and so Public Works would like to hire someone to actually train alongside the existing position so that when that person vacates the position, the existing person, the person who's brought on board, it's seamless, they know exactly what they're doing, and there's a smooth transition. And so you'll see the first year of an additional cost of $104,000, but then that drops to only $15,000 in year 2024. So the total amount...
Should actually be negative $15,000?
I'm sorry, that's supposed to be a negative $15,000. Thank you, Janella. So that's really good. So we have a total ARPA funding request for these items of $336,000 for year 2023 and $140,000 for 2024. So as a result of the conversations and presentations that took place in previous budget presentations, there are some new items here proposed by the City Council. And we discussed the first two during the last meeting, and one is conducting an economic conditions market analysis. I did mention earlier that I had reached out to three firms, and I told them the kind of study that we want to undertake, what it would involve, and there were estimated amounts of anywhere up to $50,000 to $75,000. But then, in speaking with Kristi, we also have to update the economic vitality element of the comprehensive plan, and so we're estimating an additional $25,000 for that. So we have a total of $100,000 year 2023 only. But there is a caveat to this. It would not take place at the beginning of the year. We would, in talking with the consultants I reached out to, we would want this to take place the latter part of the year. And the reason for that is we want the numbers to be as accurate as possible so that when the comp plan amendment is taking place and adopted in 2024, the numbers related to economic analysis are as recent as possible. So that's the purpose of why it would take place in the latter part of the year. We also have an amount of $49,000 for both years for an EASC Mount Lake Terrace, Mount Lake Terrace Chamber partnership. I did provide you a handout this evening. It is exactly like the one I sent you recently. And the changes, you can find the changes on the back page. And you might recall that initially, EASC had proposed about 500, 400, or 500 hours for event assistance. And I believe it was Councilmember Wall who mentioned, can we reshape the hours in this proposal and get more of the hours dedicated to consulting, business assistance, recruitment? I said, I'll reach out to EASC. I did. They actually thanked us for doing that because they said it makes a lot more sense. It's actually more targeted to the expertise that they provide communities. So you'll see in the middle of that table, you'll see, I think, 400 and 100 under business consulting. So we've flipped it so that they help a lot more with the businesses directly and the chamber. And then a lot, few hour, fewer hours dedicated to event assistance. And in this case, the event assistance wouldn't just be to help out with tour de terrasse and things like that, but any events the chamber might want to put on. And so this has been tailored a little more to fit, I think, the needs of the Mount Lake Terrace community. I did speak with Councilmember Wall about this, and he did say he's much happier with the new structure of ours. Let's see. So the next three items under boards and commissions, these are new, and this comes from council discussion. And we're hoping that we heard your comments correctly, and if we didn't, let us know. We can certainly update these numbers. But in talking with the city manager, who apparently talked with Councilmember Ryan and other conversations that took place, we're proposing $20,000 for years '23 and '24. And this would be primarily for helping with events, major events related to the Arts Commission. There's an amount of $10,000 for each year of the biennial budget, and this would be for the Planning Commission. And the purpose here is for training, conferences, et cetera, because the Planning Commission does require a certain level of training, particularly related to land use. And AWC and other entities put training on that the Planning Commissioners could participate in. And then we have an amount of $20,000 for year 2023 and $10,000 for year 2024 for the Recreation Parks Advisory Commission. In talking with the Parks and Rec Director, these would be, this funding would be used for small capital projects, and it's typically the ARPA, the commission that really determines how this money is spent on certain projects and parks throughout the community. So the total amount here is, I'm sorry, related to ARPA would be $149,000 and $149,000 for years '23 and '24. And if there are other items that the Council would like to see money directed towards, please let us know. But we're hoping that we got this accurate. And then the budget summary. This is consistent with what was presented on a couple of the evenings. And again, the 1% property increase, which was approved recently by the City Council, the wages and benefits related to the cost of living percentage, and then the ending fund balances for years '23 and '24. And so that concludes my presentation, first part of my presentation, so I will stop share.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Basic infra questions about the slides itself. So Park and Rec. So most of them tally down at the bottom and give you a total for the ARPA, and some of them don't. And so can you give us an overall balance of what ARPA funds are going to be on all these? Because slides one and two don't have the total calculations of the ARPA fund, but the following slides do. That's helping balance our budget. And so I'm just wondering, and then there was a negative $15,000, I heard, and is that reflected in the bottom total lines of the overall general fund?
I'm sorry. Zoom is not coming up anymore. So I'm not sure what's going on there. But yes, to answer your question, I'm sorry, we're having some Zoom problems here. The, what's that? Yeah, it's somehow disconnected. Get that started up again. Oh, just started.
Councilmember Woodard, if you have things that you want to say, I guess I can see whether or not you raise your hand or put a raised hand up. Otherwise, I wouldn't be looking at the screen for you.
Okay. There we go. Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, Councilmember Sonmore. So for the slide that's on the screen now, the bottom numbers relate to the total ARPA funding being requested for those relating to what was submitted by the city manager.
Can you tell me on that page that you're on, it says total ARPA fundings, but in the fund balances on the right-hand side, all the other slides say ARPA funds, but these say the actual funds? So I don't know which ones are actual from the ARPA fund?
Yes. So the slides that I went through, you'll notice on the right-hand column, it tells you whether or not the funds are requested from ARPA, or they are to be funded by the general fund. And so the three slides themselves, on the third slide, you see the total amount for year '23 and '24 relating to requests from ARPA funding. And so for year 2023, of all the items that are on those three slides, the amount related to ARPA would be $336,000. And then for 2024, the amount requested would be for $141,000, for a total of about $477,000.
So the first three slides are accumulated on the third slide?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And this is what I presented on November 7th. And so I separated it out from the slide that's showing on the screen now. Let me get this back. Technical difficulties. There we go. Now it's the whole screen. There we go. So the slide you see on the screen this evening, this relates to comments and discussions that we had with the City Council since our initial presentation. And so these are in addition to the amounts that you see on that third slide. So when you see ARPA funding on the bottom, the $149,000 relates to the first two line items of this, of this slide, and the $49,000 relates to the second line item of this slide. And so if you were to take all of this together with the third slide, you would have about $670,000 from ARPA. And I did mention that on November 7th, that we did not want to get out too far ahead of the City Council, but we definitely wanted to suggest and recommend some potential uses for ARPA. And so we did present that on November 7th. Since that time, as a result of the discussions that took place on November 7th, 9th, 10th, and 17th, that's where you see this slide here. Councilmember Wall raised, or discussed, raised the issue and discussed the need for the market analysis. And then past conversations with the City Council, you've all expressed an interest in helping the chamber out and just trying to get them on their feet. And so that's where this line item comes from. And then we initially had proposed $30,000 for the DEIC, and that was just to kind of help them get off the ground. And then the conversation migrated into, okay, you're presenting or proposing funding for DEIC, is there any other funding that is proposed for any other boards and/or commissions? And so since that time, the amounts that you see on the screen here for those three under boards and commissions, these are amounts that are coming from conversations that have taken place amongst the executive leadership team and then discussions that have taken place between the city manager and council members as well.
Mayor and Councilman, if I may just add a comment to put ARPA in context, I guess, the, as we're all aware, ARPA is essentially one-time money because we don't know that there will ever be future ARPA's. And so for the most part, not for total part, but for the most part, the emphasis has been on capital or one-time expenditures as opposed to ongoing. As Mr. Clifton has said, when there's ongoing, the assumption has been that it would be continued by the general fund beyond 2024 in a sustainable fashion so that we've not overextended the general fund. Also, I think it's important that we remember that ARPA still has $4.5 million unallocated dollars?
4.9.
Okay, better, a better number, 4.9 million unallocated dollars. And I've recommended to you before, and I'll recommend again this evening, that we not try to budget that right now, but that we perhaps as soon as the first month or two of the new year, work together to figure out what would be the biggest bang for the ARPA buck in terms of perhaps matching a capital project that's important for the city's economic development, or some other one-time thing that makes a difference for the city going forward in the future. So I'm personally very pleased that so far we've kept ARPA in perspective, and we've not overdone it. But certainly with the budget that you just, that was presented over the last few workshops, there is quite a lot of ARPA spending going on, but it's still proportionally pretty small compared to the total.
And I might correct myself if I might. City manager, we have about $5.9 million in ARPA funding that we received from the federal government. We gave $500,000 to Volunteers of America, so that brought us down to about 5.4. And then if you took the initial amount that we proposed on November 7th, that would have brought it down to around 4.9. And adding another $200,000 from the slide you see on the screen right now, that would bring it down to about 4.7. That would still be available.
Does anyone else? Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple questions. The first would be, to help my ignorance here, we're going to have a public hearing and adoption of the budget on Monday, and then again on Tuesday. And I'm just wondering, why do we need two days for a public hearing and adoption?
You actually do not, but we had tentatively scheduled the 6th just in case.
Oh, just in case. Okay, tentative.
Because as you know, with the loss of some of our leadership, we started the budget process late, and we weren't sure exactly, you know, when we were going to conclude the budget process. So that was just a kind of a extra day in case needed.
Awesome, thank you. Now, I wanted to go on to page four, proposed changes from 2021 to 2022 budget. Contracting with consultant to assist DEIC with work plan, events, and meetings. I recall a recommendation from our city manager on, and our Mayor Protem, Councilmember Mayor Protem Wall, on having the DEIC with a $10,000 for the work plan, meetings, and then the other $20,000 that equal $30,000 go into a pool for events. We had talked about that. And I bring this up because the Arts Advisory Commission, I'm going to read a couple things here. It was, I'm taking this off of our website, so I'm going to be reading some things on our website from Mount Lake Terrace Arts Advisory Commission and the DEIC Commission. The Arts Advisory Commission was established in 1971, and they work to promote and sponsor activities and events that enhance the cultural atmosphere of the community. Now, their goals are to collaborate with artists, business, government, education, residents, and guests. Create opportunity for artists, including visual, performing, and literary arts. Encourage public and private partnerships to provide funding. They have a goal, and the position of cultural arts as a community and economic building blocks. They're to engage our community, to educate, inform, and inspire. They're to promote understandings of diverse cultures, ages, and abilities. Now, the arts and cultural, they have, after that, in 2009, our city put together Arts and Cultural Strategic Plan. It was approved by the City Council in 2009. The Mount Lake Terrace Arts Advisory Commission values cultural arts as vital to the human spirit, a means to connect a diverse community, and essential to the health and vitality of our city. The Mount Lake Terrace Arts Commission mission is to nurture, support, and promote the cultural arts as a vital element of our community's quality of life, economic vitality, and vibrant community identity. Now, the reason I bring that up is that they therefore are in charge of the events. And I brought that up last time. I said that the Tour de Terrasse is a private event. National Night Out used to be with the Police Advisory Board, which is disbanded, and the police took that over. We had the July 3rd, right before 4th of July event, which was... We had the July 3rd, right before 4th of July event, which was put on by hamburger, cheeseburger babies for two years. And then they moved out of the city, and the city put on that event. So they are kind of in charge of that. And I see we're having a, gonna hire an events coordinator to help with all that. The thing is, though, we don't want to have two commissions that do events because they could collide with each other on events. Now, I've spoken to the, as being a liaison to the Arts Commission, I have spoken with the Arts Commission, and we have three members that are speaking right now with the DEI to collaborate regarding events. Because now I'll read the mission statement for the DEI. The mission of the Mont Lake Terrace DEIC is to celebrate and promote diverse, equitable, and inclusive culture within the community. Eliminate any form of actual or perceived discrimination, and help community members from all backgrounds to learn, grow, and thrive. Now, with that, they have four goals. To provide recommendations to the city council that identify opportunities to address DEI issues, promote DEI programs. So DEI programs isn't necessarily, that's not an event, that's a program. So we'd have to be more specific on that. And/or provide guidance to create a more accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community. Anyway, there's three other goals they have, none of which include events. Now, I'm thinking if the DEI, or the parks, or anybody wants to put on an event, they'd have to coordinate with the Mont Lake Terrace Arts Advisory Commission. Now, I'm assuming that this vision statement, we'd like, I'd have to check with our attorney, Hillary, to see, I believe that with that, this is in our code. And I'd hate for us to go against our code because we'd be breaking our own code. So we want to, we'd want to be in our own code. And so I'm recommending that the budget, as recommended by city manager and our mayor pro tem and myself, is that the DEI will have $10,000 so they could have their training, and then the $20,000 goes into a pool for events, which is either, we have to figure out what that's going to be, who's in charge of that money. Because by the vision statement, the Arts Advisory Commission's in charge. And I'd like to also let you know that for the last 16 years, the Arts Advisory Commission has not received any money from the city. It's always mentioned, why don't we have arts in the park, or why don't we have music in the park? Well, it's hard to put that on when you don't have any money. You can't put on an event without money. And it was recommended to the arts many years ago, perhaps 10 years ago, that the Arts Commission, if they'd like to do that, they could put on a bake sale and sell cookies and then make money so then they could have arts in the park or music in the park. They are, it was also suggested to put on an auction, and they did do that. And I have to remind you that they are just the seven members. And I think they booked that on at the Nile Country Club, and I think they made $200 out of it. And that's not enough money, that's hardly enough money to hire my band back 40 years ago when I played rock and roll. I still play rock and roll. But anyway, so I'm kind of recommending that a change be made for that amount of money. And then we're going to have to figure out, is it, as our website states, is the Mont Lake Terrace in charge of the cultural events as stated on our website? So I don't know if we want to have a discussion on that or have our lawyer look into that.
I would just like to offer a couple of comments in response to those concerns. Part of the reason why there's a new $40,000 over the two years for arts, is for the arts events, that number, those dollars were not there at our last workshop, so that has been added in as a new recommended budget. But when I, as someone who doesn't have a history here with any of your commissions very much, my sense of events coordination is that this budget, for the first time, actually proposes a special events coordinator. So it's not, it doesn't belong to a commission or a department, it's a city events coordinator. From a management standpoint, it may be housed in Parks and Recreation, but as I, as city manager, I view it as a city position that would coordinate between the DEIC and Arts Commission, other departments, the city council, to develop and provide and put on the kinds of events that the city wants to have. So I think that's a major step forward, and that's certainly a significant dollar commitment to events. And so I think all the commissions, hopefully in collaboration, could celebrate on the kinds of events they have so they're not competing for dates or events, but that they're working together, which would make a lot of sense. What is unique, in my opinion, about the DEIC is that it is kind of a brand-new thing. And I think with all due respect, I think it may be somewhat floundering because it has a charge that hasn't been clearly understood. And it's not just in this city. I think I can point to a whole host of other cities in the Puget Sound that have started commissions, and they're not quite sure, they know it's important, they know it's a value that needs to be emphasized, but they're not quite sure how to go about doing it. And so the allocation that was started out to support the DEIC with the $30,000, don't have in front of me, but was, in my opinion, was essentially a startup to develop a strategic plan to help the DEIC define its mission and to set a direction. It was not intended to be an ongoing allocation, it was not intended to be something to fund events for the DEIC, it's really to get the DEIC going. These other commissions, whether it's arts, Recreation and Parks, Planning Commission, they all have a history. They've been around for a long time, they kind of know what they're doing, I believe, and they work well together, and they perform their mission. So I, I think the startup nature of DEIC is what warranted these dollars. But in the discussion about these dollars a few workshops ago, it was brought up that, well, shouldn't there be support for some of the other commissions that are also doing valuable work? And I think that's where the new money came in for events. But I think it's important that we don't put events dollars in, you know, three or four or five different places, even though budgetarily we may be doing that. But from a policy and a management standpoint, events ought to be coordinated. And as the city gets ready, if you approve the budget to hire an events coordinator, that person will have as his or her task to work with all these groups and bring it all together and come up with the kinds of events that all of you want to see happen here with the financial support to do it. So I think in listening to your comments, I think this budget addresses both the one-time nature of DEIC and the commitment that the city wants to put forward for events. So I don't, I don't personally believe that we're in a competitive mode, that, you know, one commission's getting more than the other. I think at the end of the day, we have a healthy program moving forward that includes Planning Commission as well, includes everyone, everyone who volunteers for the city ought to feel like they're being supported. And I, and I believe that this budget intends to do that. That doesn't take away from council's ability to rearrange the dollars as you see fit. So that was kind of a long-winded way of saying that I, that I think we've heard your comments both last time and again, we certainly did this evening, and I believe they're incorporated into here.
Do you want to go? Oh, okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. That makes sense. I just don't want to have two commissions and then a arts, and a new events coordinator and stepping on each other's toes. And we, so.
I hear you.
And I don't understand, the reason I'm also questioning the $30,000 is I know that in the Arts Commission, approximately 16 years ago, they had no money to do any training. And so what they did was networking with all the cities in King and Snohomish County. So they put out their labor and studied from all the Arts Commissions in Shoreline, Edmonds, so on and so forth. So they, they did a lot of their own legwork, kind of studying on that. So they didn't have someone come, and they didn't pay them, you know, that. So I'm just, I just don't understand the $30,000 in training.
It's not $30,000 in training, it's only $10,000 a year. $20,000 is.
No, no, it's 20, in one year, it's $30,000.
Right, but 10 of it is the trainer.
Right. Where's the other $20,000 going?
That's the events.
The strategic plan.
But why is it in their budget?
Arts got $20,000, too.
I'm not talking about that. Why is all the, if it's $10,000 for training and $20,000 events, why is it in their pool in the budget? That's the question. Why is the money in their pool?
Who wants to go first? Councilmember Ricardo or?
Oh, if I might provide additional clarification, we anticipated that comment, which is why it's worded as such. It says events, it doesn't say event management because that's not the intent, but the DEIC could be a sponsor. They have had speakers come in, sometimes speakers cost money, so you have to be able to pay for a speaker. Also, it's unknown at this time how much a consultant's actually going to cost to bring in, to help facilitate the monthly meetings, to help prepare a strategic plan, and prepare the plan itself with documentation and everything else. So it's unclear to me where the 10 and 20 split came because I don't think that was ever the intent of the $30,000. It was to provide what we're estimating to be an overall funding source to help pay for a facilitator, a consultant, to help pay for the creation of a strategic plan, a work plan, and then also to help pay for events. And it would be hoped that they collaborate with the Arts Commission and other commissions and other community groups when planning these events. So that's really the intent here. It's not to create a hard and fast number for the consultant and for the rest of the event, you know, paying for speakers. It's more of just to provide what we, what we think might be the amount needed for a consultant, for the strategic plan, and in ancillary events and things like that. So I hope that helps.
If I may, I think part of the benefit of having a consultant, and I like, councilmember Ryan, your comment about how the Arts Commission went to other cities and saw what they were doing. There are a number of other cities around here that are, that are, that have gotten involved with the DEI issues and how to move them forward. And they've also tripped over their feet a number of times, and I've been part of conversations with other city managers about both steps and missteps. And so I think there are lessons to be learned from the community in a larger sense, having the right consultant who's actually worked with other communities. And it probably, as Mr. Clifton just mentioned, it's likely to cost a lot less than what's budgeted here. And the hiring of, the consultant, of course, will be done by the city, not by the commission. But the, the benefit would be to be able to learn from others' mistakes and actually put forward a strategy, a strategic plan that makes sense for Mont Lake Terrace in terms of what we want to do. So as I said earlier, it's a one-time startup, if you will, and I do think the dollars will be less than what's budgeted.
Councilmember Ricardo?
Thank you, mayor. I guess another way to look at this, when we originally talked about it, I floated out the idea of maybe, since we're going to create a new position of a special event coordinator, it also comes with a pool of money to fund events in the city. So rather than putting it as a budgeted line item, line item for DEIC or arts, or, you know, we put that money in a pool and it sits with the special art, or the special events coordinator position. You know, I totally get and understand, but I'd like to see the DEIC get together with the consultant to come up with a work plan and a strategic plan, just like we're going to hire consultants to do a salary survey, we want to hire a consultant to do an economic conditions and market analysis. So, I mean, that precedent for that is set within the city. We did it with our, recently with our Parks and Rec Open Space Plan and things like that. So rather than, I guess my proposal would be, rather than having each commission earmarked or line item a certain amount of money, we as a council would agree, this is to start up the program and then figure out what ongoing funding would be. We might use ARPA funds at a certain amount, and that money is, is part of, or it's housed in the special events coordinator. So if the DEIC or the arts or ARPA want to do a special event, they're going to coordinate it through the coordinator, and they're going to seek funding from the coordinator in that pot of money as well as hotel motel tax or wherever else we can find it. Thank you.
Yeah, that definitely could work.
Go ahead, councilmember Salmore.
So is that a proposal? Because page 68 of our budget book defines the DEI policy, and it specifically says $30,000 is budgeted for professional services, and then another $3,500 would be for one member in the DEIC to participate in leadership of Snohomish County. And then we've already coordinated an extra printing for the city council and the DEI commission. So now I'm hearing it's going to be separated out because right here it's very clear that the DEI, it has professional services for 35, or for $30,000. And then it says in train to allow the step-up conferences and other training, it's in another bulleted item, and one membership in amount. So it says in training to allow, so I don't know if there's other expenses because the line item up above doesn't mention training. And it's only for 2023 and 2024 that comes from ARPA funds. So I'm hearing now that the $30,000 would go into a pool of money to help strategically help the new person coming in to do events. So it's getting a little convoluted to me, so I'm not sure quite what's going on.
If I can try to put your comments, councilmember Salmore, into context, the, I mean, the budget right now is a proposal that came from the city manager's office and was presented over the course of several workshops. The goal here between now and hopefully next week is to have this be the council's budget. And if, as councilmember McCarthy said a moment ago, if there's a desire to put events money together and not have each commission view the dollars as belonging to them, so to speak, that's easily done within the context of this budget and can certainly be done between now and the end of the week. So that the numbers, if the numbers are staying the same, they can be reorganized easily enough. Having worked for many years with a lot of commissions, I do think there's both a good and a bad to how you play this out because when, when the money does get allocated to the commission, you know, the good-hearted volunteers who are on the commissions often feel like it's their money, it's the commission's money, and so they get very possessive over the $10,000 or $20,000 or $30,000 that they think they have. And if suddenly the consultant contract ends up being $12,000 less, then they're going to say, oh, well, we have $12,000 more than we need to spend. And so there is that, that danger that you have people feeling like it belongs to them. If you keep it in a more centralized way, even though it may seem a bit cavalier on the part of, of city management, but it does give the city the ability to get the job done and still respect the commission's work without having them hold on to the money. But certainly if I were a new events coordinator applying for the job at the city here, I would prefer to think that the events money is in a centralized place, that I would not have to go shopping around from arts to DEIC to parks and everywhere else to see if I can use this much money to put on any Parks and everywhere else to see if I can use this much money to put on an event when each event ought to have a component that serves everyone. So I do think the idea of centralizing events money makes a lot of sense, even though it's not the way it was presented initially.
And if that is the choice of the City Council, then we would simply modify the narrative between now and Monday so that it is consistent with council direction.
Go ahead, Councilmember Salmore.
I was just gonna, a caveat to what you just said too, with that professional person coming in, especially if they can, can assist in finding grants and appropriated funds. That really helps to enhance everything. You know, it's nice to have somebody who's able to do a grant because then, you know, if the DEIC has a certain project, you know, there's grants out for that and we can help with that too. So we can really make it a, a good program for everybody.
So if, if that is the direction the council wishes to go, what we could do is maybe call it a boards and commissions. Lack of, I'm lacking the suffix for that, but you know, we could pull the money and it would be a board to commit, for boards and commissions and it could be for plans, events, speakers. It could be for a lot of different things. And like the city manager Knight said, we could have that then under the special events coordinator to utilize as needed as when they work with the boards and commissions.
But for right now, we have the DEIC person that, that we're gonna be hiring to get them started, jump started. And then there is one person going to a leadership conference. And then I think that in, in Planning Commission, there's, there's a planning workshop that I know I went to when I was a Planning Commissioner. And, and if, if one or more would like to attend that, that is all in the fun. In this pool's fun. So it doesn't all have to, we, we don't have to say, well, this came out of the Planning Commission's fund and this came out. It's all from that fund. Because I'm gonna be bringing up something else later on about a coordinated event between Arts and the D I C that would work. And it might, and it probably would include the parks too, because I'm thinking about it being in either in a park or in our plaza, which is our park.
So the total of those four line items is $70,000? So.
Is it 80,000 of 2023 and then 70,000 2024?
Yeah, it's 30 plus 20 plus 10 plus 20 per year 20, 23. And then for 2024, it's the same.
Parks goes.
Yep.
So you're talking about all line items for boards and commissions?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would take the DEIC and I would add it to the other boards and commission amounts for a total of 70.
And rather, rather than put it in a a new department per se, it, it could be put in either council's budget or the city manager's budget. I mean, some centralized place where, where it'll be viewed as a, a source that can support all. Apologize for interrupting you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And appreciate the good conversation and think the idea of an events and training pool for commissions is, is very appealing and appreciate, you know, that being brought forward and discussed. I think my only concern about the direction that it sounds like we're talking about is going back to what the city manager was discussing previously. So we created this commission. We kind of gave them some latitude, but not a lot of direction and a lot of support to solidify the work that they're doing and our expectations around that. And so I, I do think when we're talking about how to help them successfully move forward, and I don't see DEIC as a standalone commission in the way I see our other commissions. From my perspective, our DEI work should be something that, you know, ultimately touches all of the work we do, whether it is as a council, as city employees, each of our boards and commissions. I mean, ideally, they would, they would be doing work that impacts all of us. And so I, I do think it's really important that we help to set them up for success from a strategic planning perspective. And I do think, I mean, having looked at consultants to do a lot of similar work, I mean, I, I mean, when we look at kind of the minimum that we're paying for external consultants as proposed in this budget from research that we've actually done, you know, just for the, the salary survey, we're talking about, you know, devoting $40,000 this next year. So I, I don't know that taking, I, I do think that keeping a significant amount of money that's going to actually cover the cost of a strategic planning consultant to help them get set up is a really important investment to make in ourselves and our community. And so I, I would love to figure out how we do that. And maybe we need some research around what those costs actually look like. But I do think that I would support kind of the pooling of events fund money. But I, I do think that we need to support getting them set up for success both now and in the future. And I think that's an important piece of investing in ourselves in that work.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ricardo.
Just one comment. When Assistant City Manager, when you added those up, did you include Independence Day celebration?
I did not, but we could.
We could, yeah. So that would give you 20 more thousand, 90,000 to begin.
Yep.
Yeah.
And if we get any grants, then we have.
And I, I should note that in discussions with the executive leadership team, what we would recommend is that this is revisited each biennial budget. In other words, I don't think it should be a set amount every year because the needs of the boards and commissions will change on a biennial basis. And it would be good in 2024 for leadership and the council to meet with the boards and commissions and ask what their needs are early on in the spring while the budget's being prepared so that we know what the need is for the next two years. And so our recommendation is that the, taking the 20 and adding it to 70, not saying 90,000 every year. In two years, it could change.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I think you clarified well with the DEI, so we're a little more clear exactly what the work plan, events and meetings are. Cause events is very vague. I think that that works out for me. Now we're talking about pooling the money and putting it with the events coordinator? Okay. Then the, the reason I'm asking that is the Arts Commission, you had 20,000 down. The reason we came up with 20,000 is because it costs, just the art show is 20,000. So now if they need the money, would they come to the events coordinator? Is that how that would then work?
Yeah, there would, my answer is that there would be an understanding that, that the arts event is important. And, and so it would be part of that pool and so it, it would get covered.
All right. Then that would possibly, depending on what the pool is, might eliminate any music in the parks if there's no money left. So I just wanna kind of throw it that way. Cause every year when we have our council retreats, it's always, let's have music in the parks. Well, we can't do that when, no, we don't have any money. So I just wanna throw that. Thank you.
If there are no more questions, I have a second part of the presentation.
I think Councilmember Woodard, if you can hear me, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I was just waiting to be recognized. Thank you.
All right, sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, this has been such a coded conversation. It's been wonderful to be home. I, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on now, particularly around this concept of events. Is the 3rd of July considered an event that now the Arts Commission would put on? That's one of many questions I will have, but again, I need to clarify because I've been on the sideline here. So let me start there. Is the 3rd of July event considered under the Arts Commission's purview now?
Jeff, are you available to speak?
Absolutely. Hopefully you can hear and see me okay. Okay, so, so now the 3rd of July, we've just now come to the realization that the Arts Commission is in charge of that? That's a yes?
We're seeing, we're seeing heads not shaking no.
That, that's a Parks, Parks and Rec, right?
Yeah.
But I was just told that events, we were just told that events since 1971 have been under the Arts Commission. And unfortunately, you know, here we find ourselves catching up to this code and realizing we're out of code compliance, which was concerned. It's literally called an event. It's a cultural event. I think America's a cultural place. So wouldn't that by definition mean that now the Arts Commission is now in charge of that event? And just go on with the concept of let's not be out of compliance with our code. And events was just as I was listening, basically since 1971 has been the Arts Commission. We didn't come up with it, of course, until some private company that the person who used to be on the council was neither here nor there. But once it became the city's last year, by definition of our code, it should have been the Arts Commission by the honorable Councilmember Ryan's points.
And in the past, we used to have a 4th of July event and then we used to have an Easter egg roll that was.
It sounds like that should have been, was, were those under the Arts Commission? So how long have we been out of compliance, I guess is a better question here. But I, that's focused on the July the 3rd event. Is that by definition, are we out of code or out of compliance with the code? Should that not be, as it was brought up since 1971, under the Arts Commission? It is a cultural event. Again, emphasis on event, subtitle, cultural.
We can probably look at modifying that.
If I heard correctly, the suggestion was to include the amounts related to the Independence Day celebration as part of a pooled funding source that would be overseen by the special events coordinator. And then the coordinator would work with various boards and/or commissions or even the Parks and Rec Department to help determine how the funding is allocated, if I, if I heard correctly.
I'm just confused why that's not considered an event when, if anything, the DEIC does will be considered an event. But this one's somehow excluded as known. It's, I'm, I'm just confused. I'm just looking for points of clarification. I, I get lost in coded conversations when I can't call things out. So I'm just gonna play by the code and just go with the code. But in 1971, we decided, as a city, I wasn't here, I was one years old. But we decided that events would be, cultural events no less, would be under the Arts Commission. And so I'm suggesting that last year when we took it over by this new realization, I guess, that that should be their event.
So Jeff Betts, did you have your hand up before I go to Councilmember Ricardo?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to mention that the, the Arts Commission is staffed by Recreation and Parks Department. So in the Arts are technically under and part of Recreation and Parks Department. It's part of the Recreation and Park Open Space Master Plan. And Recreation and Park staff did administer the Arts Plan. So, so all those things are, can be ran out of the Recreation and Parks Department as they currently are. There are many different types of events and I think that, that, that this special event coordinator could assist with them as, as proposed previously.
So I guess that would beg the question of why don't, does the Parks run the tour day, or Terrace the Arts, excuse me, I'm getting flustered here. I'm confused. It feels like we're, feels like we're cherry picking what we're gonna call an event, but we're not gonna call an event. Now you're telling me, well, the Arts Commission is technically the Parks Commission, so it's always been there? I mean, where are we going with that comment? I'm confused. I'm just trying to understand how one commission is in charge of everything. We don't adjust for time. We're in 2021, but we're gonna date back to 1971 and expand only to a certain extent the concept just to make sure that what, what's the goal here, I guess?
I would say that the Arts Commission is advisory and so is the Recreation and Parks. They're both advisory commissions, that they advise on events. And that department that assists with those different commissions is the Recreation and Parks Department. That's all I was mentioning is that they all are based out of Recreation and Parks essentially.
Well, then maybe I need a point of clarification from the bringing up of the 1971 establishment and that it's, that they are in charge of events. Maybe I'm misunderstanding Councilmember Ryan's, I thought, well-taken point. So do I ask, who do I ask for that clarification from?
Do you want, do you want me to cite the code?
Go ahead and then I.
Sorry, I had this on. I can just cite the code. It's 2.45.050 duties and responsibilities. But it, it's really, I, I think the bottom line is here is everybody's just trying to do the right thing and trying to make sure that everybody has funding. And this is the most funding we've ever had for boards and commissions. And we've never had this extra money from ARPA funds. So I think it's just a point of clarification that we're just trying to be, do everybody right. We want to do what's right for the Arts. We want to do right for the DEIC, DEI and making sure that it's all functionally coordinated. And I don't think we're doing anything wrong. I think we're getting into specifics. And if you just want to know about the code, it just says that the Arts, they'll seek out, promote and sponsor activities which enhance the cultural atmosphere of the community and the advice of the city manager and city council regarding site selections, acquisitions, which they've been doing for years and art improvements. And we're just making room for another entity to come in. And so I think we're actually really at a good point because there is money there to promote what we have been wanting to do for years. And so I just want us not to get wrapped around 1971, but trying to come out and do the right thing for everybody. And so.
And I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And believe me, the, that back page with the other commissions having money was my suggestion. So let's make it clear, I'm all on board with, let's make sure the money is there. My concern becomes, well, if only one commission is in charge of events and we have this pool of money, do the other commissions, if they want to put on a quote unquote event, find themselves hamstrung to have to first talk to another condition, commission to say, hey, can we do this event? And then that commission is the only one that's in charge of putting on events. They have the right to say yea or nay, I would imagine. And so I want to make sure that we are just creating a pool of money, but we're actually making sure that we actually go with, this is your idea, you may proceed with it if the funding is there. So I'm, I'm more at the, well, I love that we just created about $90,000 when we started off with 20. So I, I'm feeling pretty good about that. Even the Planning Commission somehow made it in there. More power to them. But at the end of the day, we can't ignore the comment about the events being one group's, one commission's responsibility. Cause then what are the others doing at that point, right? So that's, that's what I'm looking for. It's like, I, I agree. Let's have the money. Absolutely. I wouldn't have suggested it. I'm happy to see it made it all the way here. For the record, I'm a little disappointed. I don't see the grant writer on here. I, I know Councilmember Murray brought that up as well, which is a whole other source of resources that was addressing this idea of, well, we haven't had money, therefore they shouldn't have money, which is kind of where this started. But we found a path and now we have a sizable amount of money. But now we have a definition battle here with, of what it means to be an event. And that's where I go, well, wait a minute. Well, let's look at, let's, let's make sure we don't pass something and miss that bigger checkmate, if you will. Cause I don't think the other commission should have to ask another commission if they can put on an event, which is what I think I heard is the case based upon its establishment back in 1971. So I'm picking that date and keep bringing it up, hopefully because folks are recognizing, wow, that was a long time ago. That, that, that commission could have a beard by now, a gray one at that. It's only a year younger than me, right? So I just want to make sure that we realize what we're really talking, what we're potentially doing here. So yes, I'm on board with the money. Now I'm concerned with what it means to put on an event.
In, in 2022, I think that what it means is that one entity is not going to be in charge. What I would like to see is for everybody to coordinate with each other and put on a project together. Because it's pooled money, they can pool resources from people to, and, and commissions. Councilmember, are you, are you okay now? All right. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great conversation. I appreciate the comments from our Parks Director, Jeff Betts. And I think drawing his word is that. word is that it's advisory commission. So that, that means that they're not really in charge of putting on, uh, cultural events only. So, uh, they work to promote and sponsor activities and events, enhance the cultural atmosphere of a community. But if we're going to have a coordinator, I think the coordinator would be in, in charge of, of doing things with all the, um, commissions. So I stand with it. It's advisory and not they're in charge. Um, so, and, and then I'd be happy to even, uh, go with the original, um, even though we just changed it and made a pool of money, I'd be happy to just go with the original now that I know what an event is with DEIC. Thank you.
If I may just make a comment about the concept of being in charge. Uh, I certainly agree that advisory commissions and, and boards are not necessarily in charge. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, it's the city council that sets policy for the city, whether it's through events or through, um, programs or through departments. Uh, and, and the city manager is supposed to execute the policies as, uh, developed by the city council. So I think it's, it's pretty sure, uh, pretty clear that it's the council and the manager who are in charge. Uh, when an events coordinator gets hired, he or she is not going to be told to just do what he or she wants to do. Uh, what I think they need to do, and if I'm here, that they, what they will do during the first thirty or sixty days is to meet with all the boards and commissions and to get a sense from the council as to what events are preferred. And with all due respect to the history, uh, that you all have and I don't, um, you know, you, you all talk about the events that you've been having, which are, are probably great. Uh, but there may be a whole host of new events that you've, you haven't had that you may want to consider having. And you may want someone who can tell you that, you know, these other people are thinking about a certain kind of event, or the city of such and such does whatever. And there's probably, uh, many ideas that, um, that could get, um, uh, some excitement going with boards and commissions and with the council as well. And that doesn't mean you have to do away with the events that you've had. But, but I think the, I think you want to see a coordinator come in who has an open mind to really looking at new ways of doing things, uh, in a respectful way that, uh, that collaborates with all your, the people who are volunteering as well, including all of yourselves. So, so I wouldn't say that the coordinator is necessarily in charge, but the coordinator is supposed to bring people together so that there could be a plan. Uh, and at the end of the day, the council will, will want to support that plan and will expect the manager to do that plan. Uh, but again, it has to be a collaborative, coordinated plan if it's going to be a good one.
All right. Does anyone else have anything else to add? Are we doing, are we doing this as a pool, or are we doing this as a? What, what is that, the pool or the? So consensus for a pool?
Yeah, I'm hearing consensus for a pool.
So we'll, we'll, uh, prepare some wording that'll, um, hopefully make some sense to the city council, um, that you can vote on. But we'll, uh, consider these resources to be pooled.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. If there's, uh, no other comments, I do have a second part of this presentation. This, this part really should be fast.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I did.
Okay.
Uh, I was a little, now, I appreciate that, whatever just happened. I, uh, the beauty of this is this is recorded, so I'll go back and make sure I'm not losing my mind. Uh, but I think I just heard us say events is not as big of a deal as, uh, it was initially presented today and in the past. I've heard this comment before. Uh, so that stated, if we're pooling the money, how much is in that DEIC line at this point?
Thirty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's not the pooled money for events. That's for the, excuse me, that's for the strategic plan.
Thank you.
We just pulled that in, though.
I thought, I'm sorry, I, I thought we were pooling the, all the events money, um, and, and the boards and commissions. Well, let me take that back.
But, uh, in the pooled money, from, from what I thought we were doing was, so there, the money is pooled, but, um, certain line, um, line items are in there.
Right. You're, you're, you're correct. And I, let me stand corrected. We did say we'd pool the boards and commissions funding, but, but we did have, I believe, an understanding that there's only one brand-new commission that needs to get the strategic plan, you know, which is the DEIC. And so that's, uh, that's going to get the support, whatever it costs for the consultant. Um, yes.
So the pooled money will have line items in it?
Actually, that would probably be a good idea, maybe to, I could see them as being targeted amounts or up to amounts or something like that. And, uh, by pooling them, if one entity doesn't spend, if it doesn't cost thirty thousand for the DEIC to prepare the work plan, strategic plan, and to bring someone on to facilitate the meeting, great. You could use the rest of that money then for other boards and/or commissions. And I think that's where the pooling comes in. But it would be good to have at least some kind of estimate for the events coordinator person to work with to, you know, at least plan and budget, uh, while they're working with all these boards and commissions. Instead saying, oh, it's pooled, you got ninety thousand for this board and commission, and then the rest get, right? So I think maybe that's, that might be a way to view it.
So just, uh, from page sixty-eight, it says it would be thirty thousand each year for twenty twenty-three and twenty-four for the DE, the DI.
And then it stops, right?
Right. And so is that what we're still stating? I just was going back to, I almost asked Doug to restate his proposal, so we, we're all on this.
Because part of that ninety is, is ARPA money that stops, and then it's general fund. So maybe that should be in the line item too.
The, um, amounts that are proposed are proposed for only two years, for all line items.
Oh, good, okay.
Uh, because, uh, what I stated earlier is it would be good just to come back every two years and ask what the boards and commissions need, and then that would be presented to the city council on a biennial, uh, basis, because I, I expect, and I'm sure the needs will change.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I do still think we need to specifically call out strategic planning as a different, a, a line item in and of itself. That is a necessary item versus, I think we'd love to see new events, we'd love to see training opportunities for, for our commissioners. And I think that pooling that makes sense, um, and allows more flexibility. I don't think there should be flexibility around the need for a strategic plan. And again, I think maybe we need to do some research to understand what that cost is. If it's not thirty thousand dollars, great. I also think it's possible it's more than thirty thousand dollars, right? And so I would love, maybe we could do some research to get a, a number that reflects what it's actually going to cost us so that we know that. And maybe it's not a two-year cost. Sorry, that's what I get for talking with my hands. Um, you know, maybe it's a one-year cost versus a two-year cost, but I would love to understand what that actually is, so we're not either overfunding or selling ourselves short to get the work done that we know needs to be done there.
We may not be able to do that before Monday, but at least if we have a general amount that we're able to work with, that will help.
Is that a raised hand, Councilmember Woodard?
It is. Uh, so thank you, uh, Councilmember Murray, for raising that point that the thirty thousand is a target, could be higher, could be lower. Uh, I do want to pass on that in the last DEIC meeting, I did learn, it wasn't run by me, I think it was between the, uh, former chair and vice chair and former city manager, Hugo, that they did do that research. So, uh, to the comment about not needing, not being able to do that by Monday, the DEIC itself may have already done, uh, that work. So I would say if you could reach out to, uh, the current chair, uh, Commissioner Page, or former chair, Commissioner Richards, you would probably have better access to that. And for all I know, they're on this call, uh, and maybe they, during public comments, can bring that up, presuming we have public comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Uh, anyone else have anything else to add? No? I guess we can move on.
Great.
So are we going to the next, next item? Would you?
Yes, I, um, part two of the presentation is just to, this should be very quick, but, uh, contained within your council packet, um, are a number of proposed revisions to the budget that was submitted to the city council. Uh, you might recall during the last meeting that, um, Councilmember Wall, Mayor Protem Wall, uh, said that he had identified some, um, items that needed to be edited or revised in the, uh, budget narratives. And so I, uh, sat down with, um, Mayor Protem Wall, or, and after the meeting, we went through those changes. And I believe I've accurately, um, included those as proposed changes in the memorandum. And so I do state that, you know, the list of items, um, contained are, um, for your review, and they're included in there. And I actually, um, referenced the budget message tab, and also the page number in your printed documents. Um, so you can see where those changes are being made. And some of the changes, there's several that are the same throughout the document. And it's, it's just simply the word "and" in one of the goals that should not have been there. And so that's been deleted. And then we, um, uh, corrected the ending fund balance amount for year 2028. Um, we made a, a minor change on page twelve, um, referencing the city council adopted town center plan in 2019. And then you'll see the, uh, word "and" stricken from the same goal in several locations throughout the budget in the CED, Community Economic Development, uh, narrative. Uh, the number should have been twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, instead of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, very minor amendment. And then again, on page ninety-four, that word "and" again. And then, um, in looking at the police narrative goals, um, uh, Councilmember Wall questioned some of the, uh, goals and, um, some of the activities that had taken place by the police department and said, is, does it really belong under housing choices, or should it actually belong under active and passive parks, or, uh, feeling safe and welcome? And so the recommended changes are in there. Uh, they're the same items, they're just in a different area or under a different goal. So the actual, uh, action items performed by the police department haven't changed, it's just, uh, moving them to a different location. And so those, those are referenced in the memorandum as well. And then the last two, um, it's that word "and" again, in the same goal. So, very minor. But, uh, if the council is okay, are okay with that, um, we will make sure that those are, uh, changed within the budget narratives.
Does anyone have any comments, questions?
Do I hear concurrence on that from the city council then? Okay, great. Okay, that concludes, uh, my presentation. And so if the council is okay, this is your budget at this time, so if you are okay with all the recommended changes from the city manager's office, then, um, we will make sure that all these changes, uh, that we've discussed tonight, and all the ones that are included within the memorandum, and all those that are, um, referenced in the PowerPoint are included within the, uh, budget documents that would be before you for the public hearing.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Assistant City Manager, for, for all of the work and the presentation. I guess just a quick, uh, follow-up conver, or question about something that Councilmember Woodard mentioned, which was the grants role and kind of the conversation we had had around that and the potential, I guess, that some of us on council saw in, in that investment. I'm just curious, I guess, how we're, how we landed on that not being included, and if, I guess, that would be helpful to know whether we just, staff doesn't necessarily see that as, as a value add at this point in time, or I guess I would be helpful, helpful to understand kind of that piece.
Yeah, not at this time for this, uh, not at this time for a full-time position. I think I mentioned that earlier, like on November seventh or something like, I think that was raised. But I could see bringing someone on, on a contractual basis, perhaps using ARPA money and having that person brought in on an as-needed basis. And so that is something that we can certainly do when the council starts discussing how they want to spend the ARPA money. So I think that actually would be a good resource of those funds. But for a full-time basis, um, we didn't really see the need of bringing someone on, uh, forty hours a week for that purpose. Yeah.
Very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? So if we're done with that, next on our agenda is public comments. Do we have any, anyone signed up for pub, public comments, or anyone out in the audi-
We still have part, part two, Daniela.
Did I just not? Okay. I guess, uh, we're back to number four, presentation and discussion ordinance with proposals. Okay.
Yeah. Oh, okay, thank you. How do I? I have many, many checks here. Beautiful. Thank you. Need to share it.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I am pleased to present you to the city's 2023-24 Proposed Biennial Budget, a financial roadmap for the city of Mount Lake Terrace that totals ninety million five hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars in 2023, and seventy-five million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-two in 2024. It is a balanced budget that does not include any cuts or reductions in services. The city manager will continue to monitor and update council on the impacts of the pandemic on city revenues and bring forward modifications to the 2023-2024 budget as necessary. With this proposed budget, our organization remains focused on our key strategic goals while meeting the challenge of limited funding with innovative service delivery. The second slide shows you the timeline. Um, I actually compared it to prior years, and it was like five or six-month timeline, and we've done it in two, or one, one and a quarter. Um, so you can see December first is the review of the 2023 Biennial Budget Ordinance, and the fifth, we will do the public hearing and the adoption of the budget. The key purpose of a municipal budget is to provide a link between city council goals and government programs that are measured to ensure those goals are being reached. The city must be receptive to the needs of the community and proactive in the management of development and revitalization in order to promote a safe environment, environment throughout the community. The budget is a results and performance-oriented plan that takes both a programmatic and line item approach to the allocation of city resources. This budget incorporates performance measures which are designed to get every city department thinking about how it can advance the goals set by the council and help the council determine ways to get the best return on the community's investments in programs and infrastructure. Likewise, we are constantly seeking to improve our operations and services. Performance measurement is one of the tools we use to do this. Performance measures are integrated into our budget to ensure accountability and establish the link between resources and results. The following goals adopted by the city council provide overall guidance for the budget. The departmental and program budgets are divided into three key sections that you'll see in your budget summaries. The general government funds, which are, consists of ten line funds, the general fund, which is one, and then the special revenue fund, which has eight funds, used to have seven, and we included the American Recovery Act fund, debt service fund, and internal service fund for our fleet. The capital improvement funds, which is real estate excise tax, street construction and capital improvement, and our utilities fund, which is stormwater drainage, sewer, and water. And our utilities fund, which is stormwater drainage, sewer, and water. Here is the general governmental funds, the utility funds, and the capital funds. You have 2020 actual, 2021 actual, 2022 revised budget, 2023 proposed budget, and 2024 proposed budget. So you can see there's the general fund, and that's where you guys have been having a lot of conversation about the boards and commissions. And then the ARPA fund. It shows no expenditures. This is expenditures here is what you're seeing. So that's how come you see nothing in the American Rescue Plan Fund and in the Strategic Reserve Fund and the Accumulated Reserve Fund, no expenditures. These are, this is your budget in brief, your community outreach, recreation parks. These are the highlights that have been, you can find them in each narrative. There are more highlights in each narrative, I just condensed them a lot. So you have your recreation and parks, arts to terrace, tour to terrace, tree lighting, national night out, tree lighting is tomorrow, markets and festivals, Independence Day celebration. You have police, which is community outreach and participation in an event succession planning, access and training. They added back the canine position, public works, community and economic development. So in conclusion, we are confident that the programs and investments included in this proposed budget reflect the policies and direction of the city council and provide the financial plan for another successful two years. So we didn't use one-time funds for ongoing operations, no program or service reductions. We have a strong reserve, 2% contingency, two and a half general fund reserve, two and a half strategic reserve. These two are combined to meet our 5% of our operating expenditures reserve. That's in the financial policies, the equipment reserve and the accumulated leave reserve. And I also have a memo to go over. So I'll pull up the memo next unless you guys have questions about these slides.
Does anyone have any questions on this before we go on?
Yeah, yeah. This was like a. Okay. No questions?
I don't see any hands going up.
So I will pull up the other. So this is the memo. I can enlarge it. There you go. Yeah, sorry about that. So over the past month, the city, so this is the part where it said few months, like five months. So I put past month. The city council has reviewed and discussed elements of the proposed 23-24 budget at a few meetings. On November 9th, you saw the different department presentations. November 10th, you saw recreation parks and public works. We adopted the property tax, 1%. The programs and investments included in the budget reflect the policies and programs and goals of the city council. The service efficiencies and savings identified in the budget coupled with our current strategies and preventative measures have helped ensure the key municipal services. For example, police, fire, parks, rec, streets, and utilities will not have to be reduced. The 2023-24 biennial budget is on the December 1st agenda to provide an opportunity for further council discussion prior to the adoption of the budget, which is on the agenda for action on December 5th. The 2023 salary schedule, this is the compensation rates for 2023. And in your, in this memo, it states the state's minimum wage increases from 1449 in '22 to 1574 in '23. There is a new position, a police support specialist. It was combined, it used to be two part-time positions. The events coordinator position, communications manager position. The computer supports technician position is moved from an hourly H14 to H17. The contracts and capital projects manager position is moved from E6 to E8. The building official position is moved from E8 to E10. The final recommendation is to provide a cost of living adjustment of 3% for all non-represented employees. The recommended motion is to move to adopt the 2023 biennial budget ordinance. And you should see, well, there should have been. This, oh, it's, it's on the ordinance, isn't it? Let's see, so let me share another. It's on the ordinance itself. So you should see on the screen the ordinance that will adopt the budget. And the salaries and benefits salary ranges. So this is for 2023 adopted budget. You can see it's like the three sections that I told you about, the general governmental funds, the utility funds, and the capital funds. You have your total revenues and your expenditures and other uses. Then for 2024, you have your beginning fund balance estimated, of course, and your revenues and other sources. Again, it's split into three different groups, the general governmental funds, the utility funds, and the capital funds. And then Exhibit C starts with the 2023 salary ranges. And let me know if you have any questions. We can't hear you.
For the non-represented employees, it says the COLA, the adjusted amount is 3%. And I swear I just read in here, is it 3% and then it goes 2% and 2%?
For the.
For the.
Union?
No, for the non-re.
Non-represented, it's three and three.
It's, oh, okay. Two in here.
I think that was one of the ideas that we had. And we just kept it at three.
Even if it says two in here, it would be three?
What does it say, two in there?
I'm not positive. I just saw that and I just can't find it right at the moment. I was just double checking.
Oh, 3, 3, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2.
Thank you. It makes sense.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any?
Any other questions?
Questions, comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we really are going on to number four? I'm just reading my, my agenda here.
Can I just ask one?
Go ahead.
On page 75, it talks about $75,000 for the IT person.
Recording in progress.
I'll, I'll ask later. It's all good.
Jonathan, hold on just a minute, I want to make sure we're still in Zoom. Is everyone frozen on Zoom?
I'm just going to say if you were addressing me, I'm trying to figure out if it's you all or us, but I don't have any sound. You all glitched out for a moment there. It's possible it's my internet, but is everyone else on this call hearing?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Oh, now I can hear you. That was really weird, you all went away for a while there.
Yeah, I think we just had a glitch here. So we're all back, we're all back now. Okay. So now we really are on number four, which is a presentation and discussion ordinance with proposed changes to MTMC 15.05.330 and 19.15, clarifying requirements for undergrounding of power and other wireline services as it relates to existing single-family dwellings and providing for some exceptions like undergrounding utilities.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Matsumoto Wright and members of the council. My name is Jonathan Morales, I'm an associate planner here at the city of Mount Lake Terrace, and I'm joined today by Kristi Osborne, Community and Economic Development Director. Today, we're here to present proposed code amendments for underground utilities, specifically MTMC 1505.330 and MTMC Chapter 1915, our zoning code definitions chapter. So in your packets today, you should have received a copy of this presentation, a memorandum, draft ordinance, and two attachments for each of the proposed code amendments. So first, I want to start with the intent of these proposed code changes. So firstly, there's a code intent, which is to clarify references to undergrounding power and other wireline services as it relates to existing single-family dwellings in all zones where they are permitted. And as far as implementation, it's to locate utility wires underground in all zones with specific exemptions for existing single-family residences in town center and all other zones. So quickly on the benefits of underground utilities, it improves the aesthetics of our streetscapes. So as you can see on the picture on the right, I'm moving away from what's currently on the left, where you see the utility poles. It improves public safety, especially related to storm events, as we've seen the last couple days, and it reduces the prevalence of power outages. And it improves access to properties by fire and emergency vehicles who may not have access due to the height of some of the utility wires. So so far to date, we've taken this to our planning commission over the course of three discussion meetings and one public hearing. So on November 14th, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation to the city council as far as approving the proposed code amendments. As required by the Growth Management Act, we also have to submit our proposed code amendments to the Department of Commerce. So we received, Commerce received a request for expedited review on October 31st and just heard from them today that they did grant the expedited review. We've also issued a determination of nonsignificance for SEPA and sent out the proposed code amendment to our partner agencies from other local cities and other agency partners. So as you know, the comprehensive plan is our guiding policy document for the city. So in 2008, there was an action step in the utilities chapter that charged the city staff to develop a strategy by 2010 to encourage undergrounding of overhead lines in town center and other areas where most appropriate. So in 2010, an underground power strategy was drafted and recommended by planning commission and approved by council in 2010 as part of the 2012 comprehensive plan update process. So currently, this is Appendix E of our comprehensive plan. Other areas in the plan where underground utilities are referenced are our land use element, so policy LU 1.12 states locate the town center's utilities underground. Policy UT 2.2, utilities element, required the undergrounding of all new electrical distribution and communication lines wherever feasible. And policy UT 2.3 encourage the undergrounding of existing electrical distribution and communication lines along key corridors such as Main Street, along 56th Avenue West, and areas where, that are being redeveloped or our streets are reconstructed. It's also briefly mentioned in the economic vitality element. So the proposed code amendments further advances the goals of the undergrounding power strategy and the charge by council to encourage undergrounding of overhead lines. So in putting together these proposed code amendments, it was important to reach out to one of our main service providers for power infrastructure, so SNOW, Snohomish County PUD. So we reached out to them and we got some information that I wanted to share with you all. So PUD standard service delivery currently is through overhead wirelines. They do not require undergrounding of utilities. This is something that is set by jurisdiction-specific, so adopted through ordinances and other policy measures. The average cost for an existing single-family dwelling to go underground is currently approximately $4,000 to $10,000. For a single-family dwelling that's just upgrading their electrical service panel, there's no charge, up to 200 amps, and anything above 200 amps is an additional $3.98 per amp. So on your screen here, sorry, it's a bit small. This is currently where undergrounding distribution circuits are in the city, so it's primarily concentrated in the town center along a stretch of 232nd Street Southwest and 236th Street Southwest, and some portions of 56th Avenue West and 55th Avenue West. So currently in our code, section 1505.330, code states that undergrounding is required when a new, replaced, relocated, upgraded, and/or extended electrical service is provided to any property in any zone. The important thing here is that the trigger for going underground for an existing single-family dwelling is moving the electrical mast. So currently, you can do a full house remodel, as long as you're not moving the electrical mast, you are not required to go underground. So the trigger there is the electrical mast. It's also required for utility lines that provide 20,000 volts servicing a subdivision, planned unit development, commercial, or industrial development. It's required for the installation of telecommunication facilities and other franchise wireline, such as cable. And it's required when other overhead wirelines are being undergrounded in the right of way. Code states that it's not required when the nearest point of connection is overhead and the poles connecting a, to a single-family dwelling is greater than 100 feet from a property. It's also not required for utility lines that are over 20,000 volts. And then these are just references to other code sections that. And then these are just references to other code sections that provide more regulations related to underground utilities. We are not proposing updates to these code sections because they pretty much stand alone, and they are consistent with the proposed code amendments that we are presenting today. So now on to our proposed code amendments. This is a brief overview. So underground utilities will be required in all town center zones, except in the case of life safety hazards. So that's one exception. Um, and also required in all other zones with, with single-family residential. So for new single-family residential, when there's new construction, they'll be required to go underground. And then we're providing a threshold mechanism where the requirement would be triggered when the valuation for a substantial improvement is fifty percent or more of the assessed value of a single-family dwelling structure. So these proposed code amendments maintain the requirement for undergrounding for all new developments and in town center, which is currently what's provided in the current code. But it clarifies requirements for undergrounding for existing single-family dwellings in all zones, provides for some exceptions in town center related to life safety hazards. So if a property needs to upgrade their panel due to life safety hazards, for example, that's something that would be an exception in town center. And then it utilizes a threshold mechanism to assess the requirement for undergrounding for existing single-family dwellings in all other zones in a cumulative three-year period. And finally, the fifty percent threshold that we, we established there is something that is set by precedent, precedent in our code. So in our non-conformance code section, we reference a fifty percent assessed value threshold for a damaged and/or abandoned building needing repairs or restoration. We also provide this percentage in our town center design standards related to remodels, building additions, and site improvements. So I wanted to provide a bit of a background on life safety hazards and why we feel this is important to address through this code amendment process. And also ensure that many single-family dwellings can upgrade their panels in a way that's not punitive through needing to go underground with the cost being quite prohibitive for many. So ZENSCO panels was, is something that is found in many existing single-family dwellings here in Mount Lake Terrace. So in two thousand two, there was a major recall and lawsuit associated with these electrical panels, I mean, because they have been known to increase the risk of electrical risk, electrical fires. So if a single-family dwelling is proposing to change out their ZENSCO panel, for example, in town center, um, this would be an exception. Even in all other zones, as long as a property's not doing a remodel and they just want to change their electrical panel, um, this is something that would require the undergrounding provision. Let's see. So the good news is this company no longer exists. Now on to our substantial improvement threshold. So we're using an example of a typical concrete block structure that's found in our city. So for this specific property, um, the assessed value is four hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Sorry, back up. So the city of Mount Lake Terrace had an average housing sale price of eight hundred and eight thousand dollars in February twenty twenty-two, and according to Snohomish County, the average assessed value was around five hundred thousand. So for this example here, the assessed value is four hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred, with the housing structure assessed at one thirty-seven nine hundred. So that's the market improvement line item. If you add the market improvement and the market land, that's how you get the assessed value. So the number that we would use for this fifty percent threshold is that one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred. So we're focused on the assessed value of the housing structure alone and not the land. So in this case, if they were to do a, a remodel that was fifty percent of that assessed value, totaling about six thousand nine hundred fifty, they would be required to underground electrical service, and this would add on an additional ten percent to the project. So we understand that undergrounding can be cost prohibitive for single-family homeowners hence the exception that we are proposing due to life safety hazards and if they're under this threshold. Finally, subsequently, we are proposing to add new definitions to chapter nineteen fifteen that correspond to these proposed code amendments. So we've provided a definition for assessed value of a single-family dwelling, definition for life safety hazard, and we're adopting in full the definition of substantial improvement, which is taken from the twenty eighteen International Building Code. Just a note on life safety hazard, as far as who would qualify a life safety hazard event, that would be through the discretion of the building official or CED director. And as far as next steps, today is an introduction and discussion. And on Monday, we will hold a public hearing and hopefully get the adoption of our proposed ordinance. And with that, I'd like to open the floor to any questions that you may have, and yeah.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Councilmember Ryan? Oh, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mayor. On the slide eleven, where substantial improvement thresholds, down towards the bottom, second sentence in the last paragraph, "If this house was moving, upgrading, or replacing electrical panel while also doing a remodel with a total value of sixty-eight thousand, da-da-da, the proposed code would require undergrounding the electrical service." So what if you, so that's if they did replace the panel and remodel. So it doesn't have anything to do with just remodeling, just replacing the panel and the remodel at the same time.
Yes, so the trigger for the requirement where we would attach the fifty percent threshold is only in the cases of a remodel. So they could also be adding on a, changing out the electrical panel as part of this.
Okay, good, because I already upgraded my panel. So that's pretty good. I'm just teasing, but I, I wanted to know, little clarification there. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember McCartell?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome you to the city. How long have you been with us?
About six months now.
About six months, okay.
Thank you.
This is the first presentation I've seen with you, so welcome.
Thank you.
Hope you're enjoying working for the fabulous town of Mount Lake Terrace.
Definitely.
Good. Uh, I guess my question kind of goes along with Councilmember Ryan's. As far as, you're like on slide seven, if you could go back to that, just, and when undergrounding required when? A new, replaced, relocated, upgraded, and/or extended electrical services provided to any property in any zone? And that includes moving the electrical? So if, let's say, I mean, I, I'm just thinking about all the new electrical vehicles out on the market. If I buy one and I have to upgrade my panel or add another line for that, does that trigger? Because if I just going to get a new panel or replace, or if, what if I had to add a, a dedicated panel just for my electric vehicle, would that trigger this undergrounding event? Do we know enough about that, or I'm not, I'm just thinking about it because?
I'm a new expert on that. I actually just got an electric vehicle and upgraded at my home. So currently, yes, we would require you to underground in an existing single-family home. What we're proposing is to say that for any existing single-family home, if you're not over that fifty percent threshold, then you do not need to underground your electrical service.
Okay, so if we don't pass this and I buy an electric vehicle, I have to underground?
Correct.
But if, okay, good. Just needed that clarification.
Yeah, and I would also add, um, we've, we've received a lot of complaints regarding this because it's, we have a lot of situations, like Jonathan was saying, where we have life safety issues as far as current panels that we have in the city, or people have situations where the panel is in a bad location. It's located in a bathroom, or it's non-code compliant. We want to make sure that people can make those code compliant for existing single-family residences and not make it cost prohibitive for them to do that. We're still going to have the same provisions if you're doing a subdivision, if you're building new, if you're doing those other things, you still need to underground. But this is to provide a little relief for existing single-family homeowners to not add additional cost when, for the most part, we have a lot of just life safety issues that we're trying to address, and we don't want to prohibit that from happening.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
So I don't see any other hands going up, so, um, oh, this is a hand?
Hands up, I'm in the internet world.
Oh, is that, oh, I can see that. I, I looked right at you.
I'm over here, I'm over here.
I looked right at you. Go ahead.
I know.
Councilmember Wood.
It's because I have the nerve to have a dark hand. You'd be amazed how many people don't see that. Uh, no worries. Uh, can you go to page eleven and also let me say thank you and welcome to the city? And even though it's been six months, it's great to meet you. And so I just wanted to kind of stop and pause and say that sixty-eight nine five, the average remodel of a bathroom right now is running about seventy thousand dollars. Just want to kind of put that supply chain, twenty twenty back in motion of the world has changed. And I also want to pause and say twenty years ago, when we bought this house and we had the electrician come out before we bought it to look at over, you know, should we buy it or not? And on the inspection, the electrician asked if he could go back to his car and get his camera, because he didn't have them on phones back then, because he needed to take a photo of this, because no one would believe him when he described to his buddies what he was looking at and was going to change out. I'm willing to suspect, uh, with me being here in the city center, that that is still around this city, those types of makeshift boxes is what I best, I think he described it as. So I'm just kind of putting into play that there's probably a lot more dangerous panels out there than we're giving credit. We named one company, but I suspect there's been some really interesting decisions made in this city over the course of the fifty-eight years, sixty-eight years? Sixty-eight years. But nonetheless, just kind of putting all this perspective, I just want to go back and kind of combine Councilmember Ryan's question and Councilmember McCartell's question to say, if I were to have remodeled my bathroom and decided that this was a time to not have this Frankenstein panel, I would have to account for undergrounding at this point, even though those would technically be separate transactions. I'm just remodeling my bathroom, which is about seventy thousand dollars. We had several bids. I don't think my house is so fancy that I, they're getting cheated here. And so I'm just going to say seventy thousand dollars to remodel, remodel, not build a new one, remodel your existing bathroom and now address that panel, I would have to underground? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
So it would be dependent on the assessed value of your property? So we would get this number through the Snohomish County Assessor as far as what the market improvement value is? Um, and then fifty percent of that is what would be the trigger to go underground?
Okay, so then let me just split that in half and say, so if I remodel my bathroom in one swoop and then wait a month and read, and then do my panel, nothing gets triggered?
Um, it's over a three-year period, so it, basically, the fifty percent threshold is the same threshold we use for other things in building and planning. Can, when you have to make improvements for like grandfathering and non-conforming uses and those things. So we wanted to be consistent with that threshold. So in your case, it's whatever your assessed value of your home is, you can do improvements for up to fifty percent of that value without having to go underground. Right now, you would automatically trigger, except with a very narrow exception, undergrounding period. So we're trying to give more leeway for people to make those improvements than less. Right now, we're, we're fairly restrictive on what you can and can't do. So this is actually an attempt to provide some relief for existing single-family homeowners in the city.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. I appreciate hearing you say that, because that's where I'm getting lost. I'm like, wouldn't this actually lead us to not making improvements? Because I can't afford that additional ten percent when I probably couldn't afford the first one hundred percent. Right? So I'm just trying to make sure that we're not actually shooting ourselves in the foot here, uh, because I'm not going to say an aesthetic, when I just had half of my damn tree fall down and I recognized the power of these branches, and there was a lot of crackling going around the city, and I know we lost a lot of power, so I don't want to downplay that. But I also don't want people to have to be stuck because they now have to account for undergrounding when, you know, your house was already set up to fail, if you will. So, but at least I'm hearing you say, no, this is designed to give us more leeway than you currently have.
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, welcome. Very nice to, to have you here for the first time. I guess I just had a question, so just for my own understanding and maybe others as well. So when we talk about the underground distribution in town center, there's, you know, very limited underground distribution circuits. And it says all the other circuits and MLT are overhead on poles. So how does that work if a, you know, if a resident who is not on one of these streets where there is underground circuits, how does that work for them to, is there a more significant cost for those that are not on these streets, or what does that look like?
An answer, I'd like to have.
Okay, so essentially, there wouldn't be additional costs. What would happen is you would underground your power onto your property, and then essentially at some point, if it's, the whole block's not undergrounded, it's going to have to come above ground to get to the existing pole. But it's just going to be the cost of undergrounding basically on your property, and that varies. You know, it depends on, hey, do I have a tree in the way? What's my topography? What's the distance, et cetera? So that's why there's that price range of kind of how much it would add to your average improvement to your electrical panel. So, um, yeah. So anyways, I know this seems like, wow, we, we hardly have any undergrounding of power. And essentially, that's in part because people have opted not to improve their service. Like Jonathan said, we have a lot of entire flips or remodels in people because of the additional cost, won't upgrade their panel. We don't want to discourage that necessarily. But when we have new development, we definitely want to require undergrounding. So slowly but surely, you get there, but it's, you know, it takes time.
Thank you. I really, I appreciate it, and just again, for my own fascination. So to get to a place where everything is undergrounded, is that Snohomish County PUD's responsibility? Is that our responsibility? How does that infrastructure eventually get into place?
So Snohomish County doesn't require any undergrounding, so that's local jurisdictions, what the provisions we put in place here at the city. And most cities have undergrounding requirements. They vary. Ours tends to be the most restrictive that we've seen in this particular area where we have an existing single-family residence and we're requiring that. Most jurisdictions, I've been told by some electricians, I'll never work in your city again. And so I tell them, hey, we're, we're going to change our ordinance here potentially, but, but it's very common, if it's new development, then we're, then a lot of jurisdictions are trying to get that undergrounded just because of things like we saw yesterday where we have, you know, issues with wind or weather conditions and, you know, the power goes out and such. So, but it, it takes, it takes a while to, you know, to see that, that happen one step at a time.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, do you have something to add, Councilmember Ryan?
Another question. I'm just kind of curious now that we're kind of moving in the age of, if I can use the terminology, I know Mayor will help me. age of, if I can use the terminology, I know Mayor will help me, is it accessory housing?
Accessory dwelling.
Yeah, dwelling, accessory dwelling. What if we had a situation where we have a house in the front and they want to build a small house in the back, uh, and it's a pole for power, how, how would that work?
Great question, um, I had the same question when we started. Um, it is less expensive to go underground from the existing house to the accessory structure than to go overhead. So in the case where we have accessory housing, people typically underground it because it's less costly in that case.
Oh, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I, I do know that, uh, we run into Zinko, um, panels quite often, um, when, when you sell a house and the inspector usually says, oh-oh, this, this has got to go. In, in the market that we had in the last several years where a lot of people were not doing inspections and, um, and sometimes buying all cash, they, um, those old panels will remain, so hopefully now we'll start getting, getting it changed, um, because I know I run into them quite often. I can't believe how many of them are still out there.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, but if they do, uh, need to just replace it, let's say that somebody listens to this and say, oh, my panel is that, and they just want to replace that panel alone, they don't have to underground.
Yeah, the cost is not going to, the cost of replacing the panel is not going to trigger that 50% threshold, they're going to be way under that, they'll be just fine.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're, we're over to, uh, public comments. Do we have anyone? Um, well, we did have people in the audience here.
No one signed up for public comments and there's no one in the online audience.
Oh, okay.
No one who isn't a panelist, that is.
All right. Um, did everyone review the, uh, December 5th agenda? And we're okay with it? Next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Because I have a list if no one else has anything. All right, um, so, we had a power outage and, uh, we had a lot of, um, um, people mentioning things on social media. One was a person, yesterday tried to pay their utility bill, walked over to our front door and, and saw a, a sign, and it, she took a photo of it, that says, closed due to, um, the power outage, and the lights were all on inside. So they probably came in the afternoon when the lights finally just came on, but she's putting it on social media saying, what is this? And was very, very negative about it. Um, and, um, I just, one, one, and, but we had some people say, one responder said, due to snow, have patience, another said, maybe power was out earlier, so, um, and again, we can't respond. So, I'm just responding here. And, um, and then, um, on an emergency, when, when there is an emergency, um, and especially yesterday, there, there was no, no way to call in or do anything, uh, with the City Hall, um, and so I'm glad that Ricky put on a, I'm sure it was, I think it was Ricky, on social media, uh, that, um, you can call 911 or PUD directly. And 911 is one that I think people hesitate to, to call, um, when that's probably the only way we can get response in a situation like yesterday. Um, the, um, the City Hall had no power, and since there was no heat and, uh, no computer usage, I didn't realize that we would also not have any email because the server was located here, I'm thinking. Um, I know we went through a lot of planning on this City Hall, and I know that we talked about a generator, um, and I don't know why, I, I remember why we didn't get a generator, but I want to know why we didn't get a generator, uh, because now all of the, the explanations that were given to me don't make any sense at all, um, because of what happened yesterday. And that, that's what I said, um, um, in the past, I said, we're gonna, we're gonna have an outage and we're not going to be able to, um, to be open to the public. And, um, anyways, it happened, so, um, as, um, as someone said to me, um, you know, we probably could look at ARPA funds to get a generator, generator, and I don't know where we can put it, because that space that we needed the generator for is now something else in this building. Um, and I, I know that, uh, Stefan worked really, really hard on this and it's, um, the decisions were all, you know, he was not the decision maker, decision maker were, were many of us, um, but we really do need to get something, uh, we can't have another storm and have our emails go down, and, and our, um, our, our staff could not even work from home. They were at home because they couldn't come in, but they couldn't even work from home, so that's one, one day of, of nothing that could have, that got done with the city. Um, so, um, I just wanted to mention that, I, but I also want to, uh, talk about Public Works. Um, the fact that they were out there all night, the fact that they worked so hard, and, um, and a lot of times, all they hear are the complaints that happened during the city, but boy, they worked their tails off, we should be thanking them. We, you know, the complaints are, like, so you didn't have any power. I went, I think it was five days without power, and then another, and then a year later, three days without power, and, and so forth, um, and so, um, this was one to two days without power, maybe some people had three days without power, but, um, they were all out there working, PUD was out there working, um, and our Public Works Department were out there working. They can only get to certain, certain amount. If, if there's 100,000 outages and they, they can do, you know, so many, you have to just do the math, um, they're, the, the patience that I, um, you know, that people had are great, but then there were some people who didn't have any patience, so, um, I, I don't want our Public Works crew and the PUD crew to think that, that everybody was complaining. Uh, no, there was a lot of people just raving about the crew, so I want them to know that. Um, uh, uh, one of the, the people, um, was, um, doing a sewer scope and cleaning out their, their sewer line, and they wanted to know how far they had to go, because apparently the, the, um, did you see that same one? Uh, apparently the same, um, the, the, um, um, plug, the, yeah, it, what was, where it was plugged was close to the middle of the road, which is where our sewer line is. So I, I remember that we had a discussion on this, that we had, um, the city will do, will, will clean out the sewer line up to a certain point, and then the, the, it's up to the homeowner to clean it all the way to the T, is it? And, um, and again, we're not really supposed to be responding on, on, uh, social media, so I just wanted to respond here, that, um, we can ask.
Well, you know, you bring up a good point, just to follow up on that. Because the council was going to make it into the street that the citizen would have to pay, and we said, no, it would stop at their property line. So there was, there's the ability for the city council to actually have the citizen pay for it into the street, but ours stops out, and I think that's specifically one, um, their item that was clogged in their sewer was blown out into the street, if I remember right, so I think that's a good question, because a lot of people were commenting on who pays, and I'm hoping that they called the city, I didn't read after a few of them, so I didn't know.
I don't go back to it.
Yeah.
Um, because I can't find it sometimes.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, but anyways, um, so if we, if we know, uh, if, if someone can just look it up again and just let, remind us where it stopped, um, does the city pay for it or clean it out to the, the, uh, the edge of the, um, property, or does it go to the middle of the road? Um, I know that when you sell a house and you get a sewer scope, they will only scope it to the, um, edge of the property. So, if there's any, um, debris beyond that, um, you know, it's something to think about. And, um, oh, the tree lighting is tomorrow night, I want to remind everybody, um, everyone's worked really hard, I see, I see the cookies and everything over there, the cocoa, and I know we're, you know, so I, everyone's worked really hard on this, and I really want, um, a, a good show, so hopefully people will, um, park outside, uh, because the roads will be closed, and then just walk half a block in and enjoy the, the show that we have planned for tomorrow night. And then, the last thing is, um, Kings Players have, um, approached again, and they're a, um, group in Mount Lake Terrace, out of Mount Lake Terrace, that, um, puts on plays, um, and they would, uh, like to, um, talk to us again, and I have the, um, emails going back and forth, but I don't have Connor's email, and I don't have William's email, so I'm just asking for somebody to just forward it to them, um, or I can just ask for their emails and I can forward it to them. Um, so, and that's one where, uh, I, I told Matt Terry, uh, who's in charge, that, um, this is probably, you know, something that'd be great for the Arts Commission and the, um, DEIC to put on, um, if it has, uh, if the subject matter had something to do with a, um, DEIC culture. Um, so, let's talk about that, um, because they, they can put, put it on in, um, this, in August, and that, and that could be done in our plaza, or it can be done in a, in a park, um, so we can, um, you know, we can do some brainstorming about that. I have seen their plays, um, because they, they did it in, um, um, Shoreline, and I was invited to go and see it. Um, and I've been following his son's career, acting career, for a long, long time. So anyways, so that's the Kings, Kings Players, and I know that, um, Councilmember Mercardo's wife is a drama teacher, and she might have some ideas too. Even though you're not going to be with us, uh, much longer, uh, you're still going to be a resident, and we can still talk to your wife.
That's true.
All right, and so that's all I have. Uh, yes, Andrew?
Yeah, I was going to do my city manager comments, because, um, actually I wanted to follow up briefly on what the mayor's already talked about, the, the significant storm event, you know, starting Tuesday night, we had four plows, one de-icing truck out, we had nine employees who were working all night dealing with fallen branches, um, logging about a, uh, or clocking about 107 hours of extra staff time, so it was a very busy night, and we have gotten, um, in spite of social media, we have gotten some, um, very complimentary, uh, comments that I'm aware of, uh, to the condition of the roads, uh, in, uh, in a short period of time. Uh, for those who like statistics, there were 2,400 gallons of de-icer applied, 40 yards of sand and salt distributed, and we did post this on our, uh, website and our, um, Facebook page, so we're, uh, even though we don't respond to the other, we can certainly get the city's message out. Uh, City Hall was closed because power, uh, was out, uh, I was here yesterday when, the power came back on in, in mid-afternoon, but by then, of course, employees had been told that the City Hall was closed, so if someone saw lights on, uh, in the middle of the afternoon, that, that the power did come on, and so a few of us, uh, ended up here. Um, uh, Mayor, you and I did talk briefly on, on Wednesday about the, uh, communication challenges of email and the system being down, uh, and I do agree that the lack of an emergency generator in a building as important as City Hall is a problem, because employees can't get access to information, uh, they couldn't work on the budget, they couldn't work on payroll, they couldn't work on processing permits. Uh, however, the, uh, email issue, which, uh, was frustrating, uh, for those of us who use the city's email address to get messages, uh, that actually was down because Comcast was down, and so Comcast provides internet service to the city, uh, and to a whole lot of other people, and because Comcast was, was down for a number of hours, even if we had a brand-new generator, uh, we still would have been down the email, because email is based upon the internet. I mean, you could look up your old emails on your system, but you couldn't be receiving new emails, and so that's, uh, a bit of a frustration, um, but the, uh, I, I do agree with what you said, Mayor, about the, uh, it's unfortunate the generator wasn't included in the building, uh, and as the council hopefully prepares to talk about ARPA funding in January or February, I, I would hope that was something that we can think about doing, because that would be, in my opinion, something worthwhile, um, to do. Um, I wanted, uh, and there's been some questions about storm debris, since there's a lot of it, uh, in terms of where it might be taken, so that's being worked on now in terms of a response, so, uh, hopefully an answer will be posted soon. Um, a couple of other quick items, uh, on the utility billing issue, I met with, um, had a discussion with Councilmember Murray the other day, became aware that that, um, was an issue, and I've since followed up, um, that we did, the city did, some number of months ago, go to a, a new system or a new, uh, vendor who provides utility billing services, uh, but they don't provide it very well, and, and they're actually failing, and so we are in the process of looking at alternatives. Um, we can still continue doing what we're doing for now, uh, but one of the concerns that, um, Councilmember Murray brought up was that people were inappropriately getting, uh, shut-off notices, and so we put an immediate stop to that, so there are no more shut-off notices unless it's a blatant case of someone refusing to pay their, their bills, so we're, we're covering the, that immediate issue, but we're in the process of transitioning to a new vendor, uh, because we're working with someone that just can't perform. We've not lost any money, we've actually not spent any city money on the vendor, uh, which I guess is a good thing, uh, but we do need to change gears and get a vendor who can provide the, the service, because it's an important service for people, not just to pay their bills, but to be able to do auto-pay if they choose to do that, to be able to check their balance, to be able to get a confirmation, all the things that people who pay bills online, uh, come to expect, uh, this vendor is not doing, so we, we, we have that issue, so thank you for, for making me aware. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to bring up, uh, even though Councilmember Mercardo is still here, uh, to prepare for the, the vacancy, uh, I have put together a timeline, uh, of what we might do, and I'd like to give it to you, um, when we meet next, would, which would be Monday, but, but essentially, I'm recommending to you that we would discuss it, um, Monday, make sure you're in concurrence, but that we would post the vacancy, uh, next week, perhaps the middle of the next week. Uh, with applications due, uh, I'm proposing to give people a little bit of time to deal with Christmas, uh, after Christmas, so let's say December 28th, and that the council could then review, uh, with the due date of December 28th, at the first council meeting in January, the council could review the applicant you, you have and, and the process for, uh, the interview questions and, and so forth. So there is an application form that was used last, last time, we revised it a little bit, but, uh, we would be able to post, uh, with your concurrence, uh, next week, um, the vacancy, the, the parameters in terms of state law... the vacancy, the parameters in terms of state law having to be a certain age, having to be a resident for a year, having no felony convictions. There are some basic legal requirements for someone to apply for a council seat. And as I think you're all aware, if this council doesn't make the appointment within 90 days, which gives us, actually till the end of March, then the county council then can by law do it for us. And so I'm sure none of you are wanting that to happen. So if we move on the timeline that I'm proposing to you, we would be able to appoint probably in mid-January, so fairly quickly. So I'll give you a memo and we'll revisit that Monday, but that will be my plan. And I think that would conclude my brief. And I guess one other issue I do want to revisit, not to have controversy end tonight, but I, we were putting agendas together. The city clerk and I were working on what to list on the agenda for the order of meetings and to make sure that the council comments and public comments, as well as city manager comments and so forth, would be made. I had come from several cities where public comments were not a part of study sessions but were a part of council meetings. And so I wasn't sure whether that was the case. I heard some mixed reviews as to whether public comments were all the time or just at the council meetings. And I pulled up the policy, which is actually attached to every agenda and is attached to the last revision that you did in, I think, May of this year. But it clearly says that council study sessions are the Thursday night before. That preceding the regular meetings, the city council uses work sessions to study issues and to discuss issues among themselves and with city staff. There shall be no public comment during these discussions. So that's, I'm just reading from the rules as you pass them. So yeah, so I'm, even though your agenda tonight has public comments, based on your rules, I would suggest the public comments be part of council meetings, which would be the first and third Monday. Anyway, I'm just throwing that out, not knowing whether you all concur or whether it was an issue. But I do want to refer you to the policy that's attached to the, both the code. And it's actually attached to the agenda that's on the website. So it's something that's there. So for more discussion. So that would conclude my comments this evening. And I look forward to seeing you. Unfortunately, I can't be at the tree lighting, but your able Assistant City Manager, Mr. Clifton, will be introducing the mayor. And the staff is going to do its best to make sure that the sidewalks and streets are de-iced as much as possible to make sure everybody's safe tomorrow. So I'm wishing you all a wonderful tree lighting.
Thank you. So Laura, did you have?
Trees down? The city will provide a place to bring the storm?
That's, that's being worked on now in terms of the, you know, I wasn't able to get a definitive answer, but that's going back and forth in terms of who would do it and where it would be. But there are a number of requests with people with downed limbs who would like to leave it for recycling to pick up. And so I don't think the city would be doing it themselves. We would be announcing how to do it. But it would be, I guess, Waste Management or whoever does the yard waste recycling would be doing it. So that, we should know, I would think, within the next day or so as to how best to do it.
Okay, we also have Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you. And of course, now my dog is barking. But Tuesday's storm was absolutely frightening. But it also is making us a little neglectful, which is Rick, Representative Larson, gave us a happy birthday notice, Mount Lake Terrace. We turned 68 back on Tuesday. So happy birthday, Mount Lake Terrace. We do know that. We just had a lot going on. So we didn't necessarily think to mention it till just now. But the follow-up to that is, when I joined council, I felt like we were in discussions about our 65th doing something, which begs the question, will we do something for our 70th? And so just kind of putting that out there, especially in the conversations about budgets and all of that, that that would cost money to do something. But just recognizing that we should probably work that on to our agenda at some point if that is, in fact, a council's wishes.
Thank you. Yes, it was on, before Virginia left, she told me, two years, be prepared. So she did remind me that we're going to be 70. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, City Manager, for looking into the billing issue. And really do appreciate the prompt addressing of that and making sure that our residents are not getting unnecessary notices around disconnection while we navigate that transition process. So thank you very much for that. Really do appreciate it. Appreciate all of the hard work of all of the city staff over the last couple of days as we've navigated the storm. I did have a quick, where was I going? Had a quick question. Oh, I had a comment. So I haven't had a chance to read the part of the public comment policy you referenced, but at least my recollection on the conversation and would love to make sure that particularly if we're changing things, that we revisit that since it wasn't a conversation that long ago. I know we had intentionally talked about having public comments at the end of our work session to give folks the opportunity to weigh in after we had had some of our, you know, conversation. And then at the beginning of our regular meetings so that they had the opportunity to weigh in before we got into our business at hand. So I think the intention was to have that as part of our, to have public comment as part of our work sessions, which is why we moved it on the agenda to where it is. I don't know if maybe we just didn't update all of our, you know, code accordingly. But I think that was at least the conversation that I recall when we had that earlier this year.
If I remember correctly, we've had public comments at both, from the very, very beginning.
We always have.
So if we've, we've been doing it that way for all these years and we've had it written the other way. I don't know if anyone's had.
Because it was written the other.
Councilmember.
I didn't mean to, we can certainly bring this back. And I'm not.
That confused me, too.
Looking for it to be controversial. I got the sense that you, some of you had different feelings about it. I was simply wanting us to go by what was written. And so that's why I pulled up the most recent revision to the public comment code, so.
Did you still want to talk?
I guess I'll chime in. I mean, since I've been on council, we've always had public comment at work sessions and regular meetings. And I think one of the point for the work session was it gives, you know, we're introduced an idea or we're discussing it. It gives the public a chance to weigh in. Because a lot of, you know, what we've been pushing for the last number of years is public input. And if we're having a work session on something and, you know, maybe it's a water rate hike or a new code or development, you know, standards or something, and we're just going to discuss it. And then all of a sudden, it's a public comment or it's at a public hearing and it's the first time the public gets to speak to us. And it's like, well, we're here to make a decision and now, you know, it's public comment time or public hearing time. And you're, this is your first chance to comment on it. It makes it difficult. So, I mean, that's one reason I know we have it in our work sessions because it's a more, like you said, it's a time to introduce an idea, start discussions. The public can weigh in and help kind of guide and direct us in the direction we need to go. So I'm all in favor of keeping it in both sessions.
I'm just curious, was the intent of what you just said in terms of policy, that the public comment would be about the discussion item or the presentation? Instead of a general public comment about someone who has an issue that's maybe unrelated?
That was, if it's an agenda item, they'd speak for that agenda item when there was public comment for it.
Right.
We've had, we've had all kinds.
Okay. I mean, it can be, yeah. I think what I'm hearing some of you say is that the intent was to have public comment at the beginning of the regular meeting, but at the end of the study session or work session, with the idea that the, whoever was making the comment had heard the presentation or the discussion and wanted to make a comment. And so my question was, is the comment supposed to be about that? Or can it be about some other topic?
It could be about anything. But they're not, they can't ask questions when we're getting the presentation and so forth. Just the council can ask, but not the public.
So they can't, like if it's public comment, they can't do their public comment during their public comment. They'd have to wait to the public comment during that action item. So if it's an agenda item with a public comment, they can't use their minutes upfront to do that. So that's why we've moved it, usually the public comment upfront, so the audience didn't have to wait till the end to just tell us that there's a tree down or something at the end of a council meeting. So that's why usually the public comment, we always put upfront.
Well, during the regular meeting, it's upfront. During the regular meeting, it's in the very beginning. And this is a work study session and it's toward the end.
Oh, well, we've had it both different ways, like you said.
Since we're on this topic, can we also clarify the three minutes, five minutes? Because I actually thought it was three minutes at the study session, five minutes at the regular or something like that. So just to get those clarified as well.
It's five and two.
Five at the, five at the study session?
No, I think it's five at the meeting, two at the study session.
Okay.
I felt like we did three minutes last time. And I didn't, and that's when I went, wait a minute, how many minutes did they get? So as long as we get that clarified, while we're getting this clarified, I'll be quiet.
Okay. Well, she just told you. It's two minutes at the study session and five minutes on the regular city meeting.
Perfect. I'm going to go back and listen to last meeting where I'm almost 1,000% positive. They said three minutes, William. And then he got three minutes. I appreciate it, two and five. That works for me. We all heard it.
All we have to do is cross compare what we used to have on here and then the change. Because we know the intent. And so maybe we need to read this a little bit better.
Yeah, and again, I apologize for bringing up at this late hour. I'll pull again the code from, I believe it was revised in May of this year. So it's like very, very recent. I'll just bring that back so we can make sure it is what you want it to be. We are prepared to do whatever you want to do. We just want to make sure we're following what you said you want to do. So more to come later.
Well, I think some of our regular people who come to meetings who are not, because of pandemic, has stopped coming and sometimes listen in. They're used to being able to be at public comment on both meetings. And I don't know if we took that away from them. Because we can have public comments on here and like tonight, no one's here. So there isn't any public comments.
Yeah, and I'm certainly not suggesting that you take anything away from what you've done. I just want to make sure that since the city clerk is fairly new and the city manager is like brand new. So I just want to make sure that we're putting the agendas together as you want them to be put together. So we will do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone else, so we're adjourned.